We will be having public hearings tonight on the items that you see on the agenda. If you didn't pick, if you didn't get a copy of the agenda, there's one on the tables up here on either side of the podium. And during the public hearing process, you're invited to go to either of the microphones on either side of the room and make a statement regarding the issues surrounding the item on the agenda, how it affects you, how it affects our city, and you're welcome to do that. I'm Janet Watson. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to start down on the end and to my right and ask if the other members will introduce themselves.
Kelly Scripture, Mayor's Office.
Jenny Robinson, City Council.
I'm Les Tilley.
Vince Dickens.
Gary Whitley.
Jennifer Nelson.
Thank you, Richard.
Steve Strickland.
Kyle Collins.
And we have several people with the Planning Department here who will be helping us with this meeting. And Claudia Anderson, who's a representative from the Legal Department, who makes sure that we abide by the letter of the law as we conduct this meeting. And as we, there are not a whole lot of people here tonight for the public hearing, so I don't think this is a necessary statement, but I always make it anyway. If you're speaking on a subdivision item or zoning item or whatever comes up, we will certainly listen to everything that you say. And we're very good at listening, everyone on this panel is. And if your neighbor or someone else in the room has addressed an issue that you're concerned about, you may rest assured that we heard them when they addressed it. So we prefer not to have those issues repeated if you can keep from it. Since we have a small meeting, we'll be more lenient about that than we normally are. So that being said, I will ask if everyone's had a chance to read the minutes of last month's meeting? And I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number one under the Public Hearing section is Beeson, a minor subdivision. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Beeson? Hearing no comment. The public hearing is closed. Item number two is Inspiration on Green Mountain, Phase Four and Five. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Inspiration on Green Mountain? Hearing no comment. Public hearing is closed. Item number three, Preserve at Inspiration, re-subdivision of Track Six, A of Green Mountain Auction Property. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Preserve at Inspiration? Hearing no comment. Public hearing is closed. Our next items on the agenda are location, character, and extent. Item A is public art, a flower petal bench. Is there anyone here to speak? Yes, Ms. Reed.
No, I would just like what it, to know what it is and what it's about.
Okay, I think that's a good question. Would you mind, you know, the, what we always say, please give your name and address for the record. We know Mrs. Reed and we know her address, but...
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive.
Thank you, Jackie. Is there anyone here from the Arts Council?
Well, what caught my attention is Twickenham Square Partners. So, is that the art museum?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the development, or the developers. I don't, I don't, who is here with the city that can speak to that? Can you, Thomas, or?
I see Kalen Deal from Forsight back there.
Oh, okay, there you are. Okay. I knew there must be someone. Would you go to the other microphone and, oh, is it?
Only one.
Because we need to be able to hear your response. And Jackie, please, please don't sit down in case you have other questions. Kalen, would you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, Kalen Deal. I work with Forsight.
And would you tell us a little bit more about the flower bench and how, where it's being built and how?
Yes. The flower petal bench is an art piece located in Twickenham Square. It will consist of a tree in the middle of the bench, and it will consist of colored tiles with historical images used for educational purposes.
And as I understand it, that's a part of the public art project that the City Council, that the Arts Council has, has been working on? That's just one of the items that we'll be considering as they go in, and I think Thomas has a drawing of it.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Kalen.
Thomas Noonie at Huntsville City Planning. In regards to the planting that will occur, there is a five-foot ring in the center for the diameter, a six-inch ring around it. It would essentially act as a seating podium for all, but there's also a art rendering on it that mosaic, a mosaic tile will be brought in to do a design for a cultural aspect for this planter in Twickenham Square.
You know, I guess I don't understand why the City Council don't talk about this if they pass all this stuff at the City Council meeting without having to come into here. Thank you, it's okay. They passed it and they got the money, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Thomas. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on the public art project, the flower petal bench? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B is Cove Park Storage, and that has been withdrawn. Did anyone come here tonight to make, to comment on that? You might have received notice. Okay, we're not going to take any action on that item. We'll just leave that hearing open. But I do hear no comment on it. Item number five is a street name change. And Thomas, who has the information on that? Do we have a drawing on that? I don't think everyone up here has seen that. Do you have it, Michelle? Okay.
Ms. Watson, Michelle Jordan, City Planning. This is...
The zoning committee didn't see it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I may be wrong, but I didn't think that the zoning committee saw this.
They probably did not see it. This is a road that was previously orchard and hundly off of Oakwood, in between Oakwood and Pratt. This road was reconfigured for flood purposes, and it is now a new street in Huntsville. And the request has come from Dr. Richard Showers to rename this street Dr. Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard. I think the image in front of you shows that the new street will run from Pratt to Wheeler. And this will be a new addition to our, our, our street catalog for the city.
Okay. Are there any questions? I'm going to ask first if, well, we'll discuss this later. Are there any comments from the people who are here for public comment? Ms. Reed?
Thank you. All I'm asking is, the City Council's already passed this?
No, ma'am.
No?
The process is it will come before Planning Commission tonight, and they will act on whether or not it goes before City Council. So if they vote to approve it and move it forward to City Council, it will go before City Council.
Am I understanding you that the Planning Commission can pass this tonight, and it would never have to go before the City Council? Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
I hope that's not true.
No, that's not true.
That's not true.
If I said that, I'd, let me try to restate it. It comes before Planning Commission first, and if they approve this request, it will go before City Council.
Thank you, okay. I like everything to go in there that wasn't elected. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we are considering this tonight in the general part of the, the meeting, but we're still open for public comments on this if anyone...
Ms. Watson, I think this request comes before you from Dr. Showers because Dr. Joseph E. Lowry, who was a civil rights leader, was born in Huntsville. And this is a way to recognize his contributions and honor his legacy here in Huntsville.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment or any more information from the city? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Zoning, Ashley.
The Winchester rezoning is located on the south side of Winchester Road and west of Shields Road. The property is approximately 20.29 acres. It includes multiple parcels within this hatched area. The current zoning is Neighborhood Business C1. The proposed rezoning district is Highway Business C4, which accommodates for multiple uses which are not permitted within our C1 district.
Is there anyone here tonight to comment on the Winchester rezoning? Yes, sir, would you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Eddie Lumpkin. We live in Birmingham, Alabama, and we're in the storage business. And we were trying to rezone this partial to accommodate partially storage in the old inside climate control storage we think would work in that area. And we were going to start by using the Winn-Dixie part and keeping the, there's some retail on, on the far end, I'm not sure of my directions out there, but we would keep some retail and some storage there and then hopefully develop the out partials.
Okay, thank, thank you for that information. Is there anyone else here to comment on the Winchester Road rezon, or Winchester rezoning? Hearing no comment, no further comments, the public hearing is closed. Item B is the Quat rezoning, Ashley.
This is newly annexed property. It's approximately 2.09 acres. It's located north of Zert Road and on the east and west sides of Arnett Road, as you can see in the hatched area here. The proposed zoning district is Residence One B, which is consistent with the other single-family detached dwellings that are on the west side of Arnett Road.
Is there anyone here tonight to comment on Quat zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item C is, the item C is zoning ordinance amendment Gateway Business C6 District. Members, if you have a, a copy of that, you might want to sort of follow along as Ashley goes over the, the proposed changes that, in this new zoning designation.
I attempted to create a brief PowerPoint, just highlighting some of the major changes, and I'll also discuss a few things that may not be listed here. The Gateway Business C6 District was created to provide a welcoming and attractive gateway into our central city area, also to encourage innovative development that may not take place within a lot of the older areas that lack design guidelines or specific uses. Also, the purpose of the district is to create a, create and maintain a harmonious transition zone between the gateway areas that we would like to see developed and the adjacent residential areas that many of the areas we would like to see this implemented, they border residential. So we wanted to create some type of zone that would be an ease as well as maintain the character and function of those neighborhoods. On your first page in Section One, there were two definitions that were created. Masonry buffer wall as well as liner building. Both of those terms currently exist within our zoning ordinance, but there were no definitions, so that's why they were created. The first definition, masonry buffer wall is designed to be compatible with the facade, character, adjacent buildings, including color, detail, textures, and design elements. Acceptable masonry finished materials include, but are not limited to, brick, stone, concrete, stucco, terracotta, and precast concrete. Concrete block is not an acceptable finished material. The mason buffery wall shall have uniform material finish on all sides. And here's a photo, I don't know how well you guys can see, but the area here adjacent to the landscaping and sidewalk is an example of the mason buffery wall. I tried to find a photo that included a building so that you could see that item in context with an actual building that fronts the street. Liner building is a building specifically designed to mask a parking lot, parking garage, or parking structure along a public frontage. Typically, this is your main example of a liner building that you would see, and traditionally the parking or a parking garage is hidden by this building, so you don't see a huge sea of parking, you see a building facade. Permitted uses, all of the permitted uses are exactly the same of our General Business C3 district, so it would be fairly similar to what you see in our downtown areas. The only exception that is excluded is our alcoholic beverage manufacturers. As a permitted use under C3, we do permit brew pubs and breweries. Under the C6 district, they will be added as a special exception only. Also, a lot of your density controls, they are the same as your General Business C3. Front yard, rear yard, side yard, they don't have any requirements unless they abut a residential district. Also, maximum height, same as downtown, unlimited for new construction. Obviously, if it's a previous building, it may have gone, fell under our previous height restrictions that have been lifted within the past 10 years. Also, total building area, 100% unless it abuts a residential district. Also, if buildings are not contiguous, there must be a minimum of 10 feet between each building for pedestrian and vehicle access, and that should also be landscaped. On pages three through seven in your packet, you'll see information for site development. This basically just details, construction materials, how doors should be transitioned, front facade, character, orientation, prohibited materials. The majority of this information, with the exception of this particular slide that does prohibit certain materials and encourage placement of others. Everything else is currently existing within our General Business C3 district and has been existing for many years. Also, there is some new information on this slide concerning the length of, if there was a solid or wall or any type of windows that are street level, there's a difference in the inches within this particular zoning district. The maximum steel height is 30 inches, whereas in some of our other zoning districts, it's a little smaller, and it can go up to 48 inches. So just minimal differences from our General Business C3 district versus this new proposed district. Also, all utilities, it's encouraged that the utilities are placed underground. This information is also exact from our General Business C3. Sinage will be regulated in accordance to our current sign control regulations, just as every other zoning district. Off-street parking will be regulated based on our Article 70 per General Business C3. There are no minimum parking requirements, so there is not a set number that you will have to go by. Parking within this district is very encouraged for alley usage as well as shared parking. We also encourage underground parking, which we don't have a lot of within the city, only mainly within our Research Park Commercial District, is there any type of underground parking. So some new parking elements have been implemented within this district. And here's an example of a liner building with the shared parking component. As you can see, the building fronts the street, the parking is hidden. Also, the, the proposed ordinance does reference our current International Building Code that's adopted by the city, so a lot of the regulations are the same. Landscaping, our landscaping requirements are very similar to our General Business C3. Small differences such as what type of shrubbery can be used, there's also a difference in the footage as far as placement is concerned, but all of the language is basically repetitive. The general landscaping requirements, also the regulation of the landscaping, same language from our General Business C3 district. Bicycle parking, PVA landscaping, lighting, performance standards, alcoholic beverage establishment regulations, all things that are, that will be currently regulated by our current regulations, so there are no changes within these areas. Also, under the performance standards, Section 50.2, that references our Research Park District, and that primarily refers to your noise, odor. A lot of those things are regulated either by a city ordinance or there's something that is a state regulation that cities are required to follow. Sinage, we did have a few signage items that currently are listed within our zoning district, and they were also listed within this ordinance that we did not have definitions for. So we have added definitions for band sign as well as in size, wall sign, also board sign, there was a definition created for that as well. All of the signage that you see listed here, all of this information is currently within our zoning district. The signage was primarily comprised of our Research Park Commercial District, which is our bridge street area, as well as signage requirements within our General Business C3 district. And on our final slides, we have the alcoholic beverage establishments within our zoning district. Each specific district has a set number of permitted uses that contain alcohol as well as any restrictions that they may have based on protected use that are listed. So here we have those items listed. And that does include your, your brew pubs, your banquet halls, your Class One liquor lounge, retailers without package sales, your off-permise beer and wine retailers, and also any restrictions that may apply if they are within a particular distance of a protected use. And on our final slide, this is language for the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Any items that require a special exception have to go forth to our Board of Zoning Adjustment, and that is Article 92. This language would be added to that particular zoning district as well as the information regarding the protect being within 500 feet of a residential or protected use.
Thank you, Ashley. Don't go away, because you may be called in for some more questions. Do you have anything else to present?
No, that's all.
Okay, that's all of your PowerPoint. I'm going to ask for public comments, and we already have Ms. Reed's name and address on the record, so, and she's standing up there, and I will call on you, Ms. Reed.
Well, I got a question. Where is the gateway? Where is all this, the changes that you're making? Where is this property?
It's not a specific property. The city has several areas in mind where we could possibly see this, this particular zoning district implemented. Mainly your areas that are leading into your central city downtown areas such as Washington, Clinton, parts of Governors. It's basically like any other zoning district, if you choose to annex property and have it zoned to this particular district, you can, or if you would like to rezone to this district, you can, but it's not a city-imposed zoning district.
If, that is, if, if a property owner petitions to rezone?
Is it not city property, any of it?
No, this isn't regarding any city property, it's just introducing a proposed zoning ordinance, a new proposed zoning ordinance.
To anybody that gets a deal with the city to build on it, yeah, I hear you. Anyway, why are all those buildings sitting up there if somebody hadn't already been doing, working on it and got it all laid out?
On the slide, those are just examples to, those are just illustrations, those weren't in Huntsville.
Who would turn that in?
Well, this is just an example from Google.
Google, okay. Google's running a city now, I guess. Google's running a city, thanks, I'll tell the mayor Thursday night. But anyway, you know, you've changed every ordinance and zoning in this whole city right here for the downtown. Will this go before the City Council meeting, this proposal right here?
Yes, ma'am.
It's been there, it's gonna go?
No, no, it's, you're seeing it for the first time tonight. We will discuss it tonight. If it's passed here, then it goes on to City Council. We don't, we do not pass zoning ordinances.
You don't make the final decision.
We don't make the final decision.
It's very interesting, the public needs to know about the downtown that we keep talking about. So thank you very much.
That's why we're having a public hearing tonight, and there'll be another one when it comes before City Council.
I'm sure I'll be there. Thank you, hon, very much.
Ashley, can you take your cursor across the landscaping there on that picture? Ms. Reed, this is a stock photo, but the masonry wall that it's in the language is referring to how the landscape will be situated. That building is not in Huntsville, it's not up for proposal to be built. That is a stock photo so that we could see what a masonry buffer wall will actually be, and that's just additional separation from the street-level parking to the actual building. It could be an apartment building or any type of office building or whatever would be allowed, but that masonry buffer wall would then provide that additional aesthetic landscaping from the street-level car parking to the building, and that is not a actual building here.
Well, let me ask you one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody had to have an idea that we're gonna use the masonry buffer wall on something, or we wouldn't have brought this in here.
So the masonry buffer wall, we use it now in some places, so this new zoning ordinance is just to have this option available should someone want to use it, so that you still have the nice aesthetics wherever it will be within the city. So whoever builds will have to build to that standard.
What it, what it says, among other things, is that you can't just go out and put a concrete block wall. It has to, it has to be finished with some kind of aesthetically pleasing material. It has to, it has to be finished with some kind of aesthetically pleasing material, such as brick or stucco or something that would make it attractive. And I think that's the way these pictures are presented as examples, just to help us see, for instance, what a masonry buffer wall is.
Thank you.
It's just a visual, Ms. Reed. This isn't anything that's proposed. It's just so you can understand and planning commission can correlate with the definitions.
Let me ask you one thing, though. You work for the city. Somebody had to bring this to you to get you in here to bring this to them. I mean, I've been watching this way too long, but it didn't come up overnight, just like that.
So.
I understand, I understand the system very well. I know.
It's a, this is a proposed ordinance, Ms. Reed, that planning staff has worked on for the past four or five months, so it's finally up for presentation.
As I understand it, and I asked a lot of questions as this came before our committees, the, as I understand it, this is an additional zoning designation that property owners can say to the city. I think this, in my area, I think this would be attractive. The city may say to property owners, I think your area that you want to develop would be attractive with this zoning, and agreements can be reached, but it's not really changing a whole lot, other than just setting some guidelines to make those gateway areas more attractive where we've not had those guidelines before, but no property's being put into it. And before any property is rezoned, it comes before this planning commission and the public is given a hearing on it, just like we're having tonight. You know, we don't do anything without a public hearing. So anytime that property is proposed to be rezoned into this, assuming it's passed by the planning commission and assuming the City Council passes it, then anytime that property is requested to be rezoned into this, we will have a hearing at which public comment can be made by citizens of this community and surrounding property owners. Is there, are there any further comments on the proposed C six zoning? Hearing no further comment. The public hearing is closed. We have subdivision committee reports. Les, do you have the? Oh, you're, Kyle, Kyle, I'm sorry, Kyle. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Subdivision committee met following recommendations. Item number one, Beeson is a minor. The committee recommends a layout approval on one lot with a waiver on a ten-foot utility and drainage easement along the south property line underneath the building. Also presented for final approval on one lot. Put a motion to recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, inspiration on Green Mountain.
Wait, wait, just a minute. I'm sorry, we had layout. We also, that was, we need a separate motion for final. We need a separate motion for final.
We need, a motion for the final approval.
Okay. Is it in order for final approval? Okay. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, inspiration on Green Mountain, Phase Four and Five. The committee recommends layout approval of one hundred and eleven lots with the following modification: cul-de-sac length along Street D to one thousand and fifty feet and the following waiver: non-radio lot line between lots nine through eleven, twenty-three through twenty-five, thirty-three, the common area, fifty-one to sixty-two, sixty-five to common area five, seventy-one to seventy-two, one oh two, one oh one, the angle of the side lot line between lots sixty-two through sixty-four and sixty-five to the common area five, eighty-four to the common area eight. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on inspiration on Green Mountain? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to you, Kyle.
Item number three, MAPCO resubdivision of Lot Two, presented for final approval on three lots. Motion to approve.
Is it in order for final approval, Jim?
It is in order for approval. It will be installed February twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, the preserve and inspiration resubdivision of Track Six A of Green Mountain auctioned property. The committee recommends preliminary approval on forty-five lots with a waiver on sidewalks along South Shawty Road. A motion to approve.
Is there any discussion on preserve it inspiration? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Overland Code Phase One and Two. The committee recommends approval of the waiver of sidewalks along the north side of Binding Branch. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on Overland Code Phase One and Two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Location, character, and extent. Item number one, the public art flower petal bench, a public area, was held. A motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the flower petal bench? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Street name change to Dr. Joseph E. Lowery Boulevard. This is the street we discussed from Oakwood Avenue south to Wheeler Avenue. Rename a portion of Hunley Drive and Orchid Street. The public hearing was held. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the street name change to Dr. Joseph E. Lowery Boulevard?
I do have a question, and this may have come up already in subdivision, but I'm asking for purposes here. Whenever a street name change takes place, there's always a concern regarding the burden it places on business owners who then have to change all of their collateral materials. Is that a concern with this street name? There's not, just from the looks of the map, it doesn't look like there's a lot of...
Yeah, this is a newly-built street and does not have any businesses.
So it's not going to impact businesses, residences.
An area where we purchased the land around it, or the existing businesses have left, so this particular area is not going to affect existing businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on this vote because of family relationship.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is there any further discussion, anything else? I would like to say that normally I am very opposed to street name changes where it continued, the continuation of a street where the name changes, but the street continues straight with no turn, and this in most ways appears to be one of those streets. But it runs into Church Street, and Church Street also runs off to the northwest, more or less parallel with the street. So, and that portion of Church Street has numerous buildings on it that would face a street, an address change if the name of that street were changed. So I am personally going to set aside my objection to this type of arrangement of streets where they change and the car utilizing that street never makes a turn. Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Vacation of a right-of-way, a portion of a right-of-way along Mahogany Row, Timberbrook subdivision. The committee recommends, as planning commission, recommend the City Council approval of said vacation. Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Can you, the reason for this is because there's a buyer that's interested, and we discovered this, and it's been there forever, and it just needs, it's not being used for anything right now. No one even knew it was there.
Any further discussion?
Madam, I don't think we had a second, did we?
A second from me.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Les, would you give us the zoning committee report?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning committee met on February the eleventh and discussed the following. These are our recommendations. Item number one, Winchester rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening. Do I hear a motion?
Is there any, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is quant zoning. The public hearing was held this evening. I move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is new zoning maps, eight through sixteen, ten dash oh two, eleven dash oh two, twelve dash oh three, and twelve dash fourteen. Adoption of new zoning map sheet eight dash sixteen, ten dash oh two, eleven dash oh two, twelve dash oh three, and twelve dash fourteen. The committee recommends that the planning commission recommend to the City Council approval of said zoning map sheets.
Is there any, oh, wait a minute, we need a second. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is the zoning ordinance amendment, Gateway Business C six district. This amends zoning ordinance Article Three definitions, adds new Article Twenty-seven Gateway Business C six district regulations, amends Article Seventy-two sign control regulations to add regulations for Article Twenty-seven, amends Article Seventy-five alcoholic beverage control regulations to add regulations for Article Twenty-seven, and amends Article Ninety-two Board of Adjustment to add regulations for Article Twenty-seven. The public hearing was held this evening. I move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll let Kyle go.
I actually have a question, I think maybe Ashley can do. Ashley, this was basically the commercial district signage, excuse me, Research Park Commercial District signage is the same that's in here.
Yes, the majority, with the exception of, I think, two items are from our downtown, our general business C three district, which is our downtown area.
Help me with section F of the, I guess, seventy-two, four, twelve, two, F. In the case of a multi-tenant building having a common entrance for tenants. See where I'm at? If I'm reading this correctly, and it is the same as the commercial district at Bridge Street, you have a multi-tenant building with a common entrance that is multi-floored. And if I'm reading this correctly, they can put a sign over their quote-unquote exterior elevation, and you might can help me with this, Les, which creates a sign on each floor of the building. This was an issue that I ran over out at Bridge Street, which I just don't think is architecturally appealing, but when I brought it up to somebody at the city, they indicated that might be kind of a fly in the ointment. So I'm trying to find out if this is the same language, and if you, do you read it the same way?
I read it the same way, and Jim and I actually talked about this at our zoning meeting. My concern is similar to yours, except that my concern, if we had multiple tenants on each floor, now we have multiple signs on each floor. And if each sign can be up to one hundred and fifty square feet, that's a ten-by-fifteen sign on each floor, so the face of your building is just gonna be signs. So I think that needs some revision.
And if you guys look on the screen, I don't know if you can read this or not, but I have, this is the City of Huntsville zoning ordinance. The only slight difference between that language that's currently existing in our Research Park district and the current language is the square footage. Currently, the maximum is one hundred square feet. Within this proposed ordinance, one hundred and fifty square feet is the maximum.
So it still allows for a sign on each elevation, each floor, for lack of a better term, but it also allows for more square footage per floor.
Yes, and that's something that planning staff can reevaluate and clean up if that's gonna become an issue.
It is a concern of mine, and I just want to bring it before this body.
Well, before I ask my question, so am I understanding that what you're saying is that if there were multiple tenants on that floor, that each one could have a sign on that floor of the exterior part of the building?
You basically could have three signs per floor, yes, as long as you don't exceed the maximum square footage. Is that correct?
Yeah. You could have a building, let's say you had three floors and you had nine tenants, you could have nine signs on a building on three different floors, three per floor. That's the only reason I bring it up. It is a concern.
But doesn't it say that the cumulative total of all signs cannot exceed one hundred and fifty feet per exterior elevation? So doesn't that place a limit on it?
Yes, that plays a limit on the amount of signs per elevation. I think what I'm bringing to this body is I do not think that it is appealing to have signage on multiple elevations. Just a personal appeal, since I'm volunteering for this, I get to throw that out.
Maybe I misunderstood. The way I read it was that each tenant could have their own sign up to one hundred and fifty square feet, not that the total square footage of signage on the building is one hundred and fifty square feet. Am I, are we?
That's how it's stated, right? Each tenant has that square footage base.
So if there are three tenants on the floor, each one can have a sign.
Right.
On that floor, on the exterior of the building.
Hundred and fifty square feet for a sign.
Each tenant may have a sign with the cumulative total of all signs not to be more than one hundred and fifty.
Be a total of all signs at a maximum of fifty. You had each tenant could get fifty or thirty or whatever they want, up to a maximum of fifty.
But every tenant can still have a sign.
Per floor.
Per floor. So you could still have a lot of signs.
You still have a lot of signs. That's my concern. So let me state for the record, I'm not up here to vote against this creation of this district. I just think that that needs to be reevaluated from just an aesthetic standpoint.
You know, I think one thing we've done in the past, when we've had a zoning ordinance come up that we had questions about, is ask that it go back to Planning Department for reevaluation of certain things that we're, you know, of course, I'm sure that we want to, you know, that this is something we need to tend to as soon as we can, but where you have the experience of dealing with that particular aspect, that, you know, that may be something.
It can become unsightly, and obviously, as an owner of real estate, you don't care about slightly sometimes if you need to get tenants in your building, okay? So if we open the Pandora's Box, there may be an opportunity. So I just think it needs to be reevaluated, since it's a brand-new creation of a brand-new district, you know? So if it has to wait thirty more days to get approved, you know, I'm not opposed to that either.
It certainly seems to be open to some misinterpretations, so for that reason, it's on its own, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Well, Madam Chair, I would support your recommendation to send this back to staff to make some additional updates and...
On that particular item, and but...
Yes, and just the ordinance in general.
I think we need to continue our discussion, though, because I think Jennifer has some questions about parking and has a lot of expertise in parking and there... and, and there, and, and there may be other avenue, other, other items that we need to discuss. We don't, we need to get it all out, you know, and try to, try to get it back here next month in a, um, in a form that hopefully will have all those issues ironed out.
Yes, and on that, I have several more questions for the planning staff that we did not, um, I guess cover in great detail, um, in some of our subcommittee meetings. Um, going back to section twenty seven point three point one slash two. So first off, actually, let me preface this whole thing by saying, I really, really, really like the direction where we are going with this ordinance and putting architectural standards in and, um, tightening up, uh, a lot of different pieces related to that, um, but I guess, you know, we are continuing to tweak, ask questions and clarify and hope to, you know, continue to tweak it, but back to twenty seven point three point one two, it says, where the sidewalks are ten feet or less in depth, doorways shall be recessed into the building. Now, one of the big things about this ordinance is that we have zero, uh, front setbacks. Where would you anticipate? What, okay, so sidewalks here, what measurement exactly does that refer to? Is that from the edge of the curb to the front of the building? Is it the paved area? What exactly is sidewalk referring to here and where would you anticipate in a walkable area that that distance is ten feet or less?
Sidewalk would be married from the edge of the building moving out, so ten feet from the?
Is the building moving out from the building? Uh, you'd like that depth for the doorway, so the doorway doesn't swing out, impede pedestrian walking.
Now, does it include a landscape buffer, a furniture zone, an edge zone? How far, what exactly does sidewalk refer to?
Sidewalk would just be a paved area similar to what you see around the square downtown.
So it could go all the way to the curb and if you have street trees, then in say some kind of planting strip, that would impede on that width. So say we have a five-foot planting strip or something like that, now you have five feet, but here you're saying you could have less than ten feet, so hypothetically you could have three feet of usable area. Are there, are there right-of-way standards that will govern how wide that pedestrian zone is between the edge of the street or the edge of the travel lane and the front of the building?
It's hard to manage all your right-of-ways because most right-of-ways are different and they all vary in size, so that's a difficult question to answer with any certainty, ranging on where this would go, you know, because we don't know where this is going to go. And, uh, some streets have eighty-foot right-of-way, some have forty-foot right-of-ways, some of them, there's a lot of difference between the pavement to the edge of the property line or the right-of-way line.
So I guess that's the follow-up question here is how will you address the right-of-way standards, um, how will pedestrian supportive right-of-way standards be addressed in places where this is zoned, whether it's piecemeal or an entire street? How will we make sure that the street itself is conducive to a comfortable pedestrian environment? Because I can say when I walk down a street, if I am right next to cars going forty-five, fifty miles an hour, it's not comfortable, even if I do have a ten-foot sidewalk and beautiful buildings to look at. So I guess, how can we be sure that we will also be able to do streetscaping or, um, standards that don't completely favor the car if we were to implement this?
Ideally, you would like to see six, see C six on an area with a new streetscape that has been implemented like you would see downtown where they've already managed the streetscape and it's pedestrian friendly.
Done very well downtown.
Again, that's ideally. So in some areas, if this is implemented, it might go on a street that's not improved and only the site that we're working on that C six is going to see this, because you can't manage the entire street, they might not all be zoned that, so that is an issue.
Um, so does that, do you feel that in any way maybe puts the cart before the horse a little bit if we are not addressing the infrastructure first before parcels? Do you think that might pose challenges?
I, I could see how it would. Um, again, it gets back to how much funding do you have to improve all your roads?
And, and some areas where it's not a city-controlled road, if it's a state highway, we have no say-so on, they need to change the width or the length or whatever of the road, so each case would vary. It's slightly different from form-based code, it's not where you're implement, implementing one entire space and you're creating streets and putting in your infrastructure, so it, it does have some slight differences, um, so I, I understand what you're saying, but
Right.
Uh, overall, this doesn't address necessarily infrastructure, because there are certain things that the zoning ordinance does not reference. It's done by other bodies and by other, um, codes, so.
And I think, I guess that, that slightly concerns me in achieving the results maybe that we are hoping to achieve if it's on a, you know, if it's in a street different from like what's already downtown, for instance, where we do have, you know, twenty, twenty-five slow-ish, narrow-ish streets, it works great. So anyways, my next question is?
Oh, before you go to the next one, can, may I, may I interject and ask a question here about the sidewalks? Now, it's, you were referring to the sidewalks as infrastructure. Um, are the sidewalks not a part of the building project? Does the, that, those are built by the city, even on a new project?
Depends on the project. Sometimes we put them in, sometimes the developer puts them in, it's all part of the agreement, whatever the project is, redifferent, it's different if it's residential versus commercial. And each project's different, so it's hard to say that it's always done one way.
But they are typically within the right-of-way, correct?
Typically.
Unless they're putting something in as, for instance, a PD district.
Right. Providence would not all be in the right-of-way.
Right.
Downtown's not all in the right-of-way.
Really? Okay.
You got your sidewalk goes all the way to your building, so.
Um, does anybody else have other questions about sidewalks or minimum standards for? No? Okay, so I have another question for you about parking, of course. Um, so I was happy to hear the zero minimum, um, what does that refer to specifically? Is that off-street parking only has a zero minimum?
So C three downtown has zero required parking.
Including on-street directly in front?
Everything.
How do you propose to manage, um, parking on-street parking in new places where this district may be done? Because right now, we price our parking downtown, would you anticipate that in districts where C sixes, we would probably need to price?
I would say that we would need to price it and hour it as well. Uh, you know, depends on the use that's in front of those paid parking areas as to how you're going to manage the, the setup for that, for that parking stall specifically.
And how, um, how will you calculate? How will you ca, so, okay, I guess I have all these questions about parking again, but I'm unclear on exactly how we would be calculating shared parking. So we have a zero minimum, but a lot of people will say, well, okay, we don't have any parking here, we need to put some in, how much do we put in unless the city wants to keep building and paying for it, which maybe doesn't set the greatest precedent?
Right.
Madam Chair, my apologies, I've got to leave for a weather-related issue for the city and I'm so sorry, but thank you, y'all continue, no.
Thank, thank you.
Do we, can we clarify the ordinance to put in specific shared parking calculations and guidelines for if people want to put them in, how do we do it?
I think that's a great suggestion and something that staff needs to look at doing to further clarifying the parking calculations for this district.
May, may I ask if, if, uh, staff and Jennifer could, um, could sort of, um, put your heads together on that, because I think Jennifer has more experience in parking design than anybody else here and?
Well, it might also be where it sh, may or perhaps should even be part of the big picture, or we could, uh, because I, I think there may be some things with article seventy that could be tweaked a little, you know, if this is to refer back to it in any way. Um, so I guess those are my main concerns and I appreciate you guys listening to them again and clarifying them, um, because I would like to agree, you know, with Gary, with Jenit on, there are certain things that perhaps we would like to send back to planning for a little while. But I do recognize the value in having a tool available, um, to go ahead and do this. And then last question, why would we not just use PD versus this new zone?
Plan Development Housing, or PUD, Plan Unit of Development, like Providence and Linden.
How, are there minimum sizes for a PD district?
They write their?
Or can that be done on parcels?
With those, with those, with those developments, they write their own rules entirely, the, the entire development is, is a?
But you have to approve it.
We have to approve it and it has to go through this entire process, but they write their own ordinance, so to speak, and each one is different.
And they also have certain calculations they have to meet based on their land use intensity and, um, some of that information is within our zoning ordinance currently. Some of it we use, some of it we don't, because it was written by a consultant back in nineteen seventy-something, so it really doesn't fit, um, but the calculations and also as far as the requirements in the package we use, but as far as the PUDs are concerned, pretty much all of their infrastructure, all of their improvements, everything is done upfront and they submit to us three separate packages with all of their information and then we go through a series of staff meetings and dissect everything they have before it is presented to the public.
Yeah, that just goes along with the concern of how can we make sure that our infrastructure matches our parcels in both properly supporting the kind of development that we want to see?
Sure.
That's, that's really it, so I appreciate, um, you listening.
Okay, are there any other questions, Jenny?
This goes back to the question actually that Ms. Reed asked earlier regarding where, where this would be applied to. It's designed, from what I understand, to apply to entrances to the central city, to making those particularly attractive, but we do have entrances to the city in the, on North Parkway and the South Parkway, Governor's Drive, that right now are extremely unattractive and are, um, I would think prime candidates to be, for, for this, for some good design element work to, to go to work, but we have existing infrastructure, so that's hard. So how would that work? Or is it possible for those to, for it to be applied to those areas?
Um, we could possibly, um, there are certain things within this ordinance that probably won't work in a setting that's completely surrounded by just heavy industry or completely surrounded by light industry. It won't be as much of a smooth transition from going to downtown where you have many of the same design guidelines and similar uses versus if you were to pick a site that's completely heavy industry, it'd be extremely noticeable, but I'm pretty sure staff could possibly put together some language that would be similar and more fitting for those major arterial areas, um, that include a lot of these same design guidelines, but include different things, particularly with the parking. I'm not sure how some of these parking requirements and certain materials may fit within a, uh, less restrictive wide-open zoning district that we may have. I just, that's just my personal opinion that, that some traits of this may not fit. It was primarily written for areas that lead directly into the central city and not necessarily for a citywide, but there could be something similar, um, that's more tailored to a major arterial, major thoroughfare area.
Well, if, if the intent though is to clean up our gateways, um, then, you know, perhaps there could be at some point, then, and these are, they, they're not big, heavy industrial areas, they're commercial areas that are just really run down and, and we need to, to make an effort to put some care into fixing them and cleaning them up. And there might be some application at some point for something like this, if not this specifically.
And a lot of the areas you mentioned, they are, are, they're not really industrial, but they're a lot of our light and heavy and industry zoning districts and they have zero design guidelines, they have zero setbacks and you can have?
You can put?
As many metal buildings as you want, whereas downtown, uh, C one, some of our Research Park districts and this proposed district are, uh, much more restrictive.
But as those areas, those areas are prime for redevelopment and as some things fall into place, I think developers will come in to do that. And as they do, it's possible that they could, could create multifunction walkable developments and this might apply to them potentially.
I, I, I mean, it looks to me as, as we have been talking about this, I've, I've been visualizing this in, in many places as, as something that might work, but might not work in exactly the same way, for instance, for a Parkway area as for a downtown area. So that, you know, that might require variances or?
But I, but I applaud the intent and, and the intent all along has been to make the, the city attractive, to make it a, a place that, that looks as good as we know it is. And, and to maybe start downtown with that intent and see how it works and then begin to expand to other areas that are also gateways to the larger city, might be something to look at down the road.
Right, and, and that's something staff, we can all sit down together and reevaluate as we continue to take a comprehensive look at the zoning ordinance and see what works, what doesn't work, what we can throw away and forget and what we would like to keep for, uh, our future zoning.
Can I also make a request that you've mentioned several streets that we would put this type of, um, zoning on, even if it's piecemeal? Could we make specific, uh, cross-sections for those streets, whether it's a new cross-section for Governors or Clinton on that stretch that as things are put in, we are ahead of the game where we know where we want to be for streetscaping? Like for instance, it was Washington Street, I think downtown, where it was straightened out and trees were put in and lights were put in and we addressed the right-of-way. Can we develop, even if we, obvious, well, I would love to overhaul the entire, uh, street cross-section book, but in the event that that's not going to happen tomorrow, can individual cross-sections be developed for streets where this would be envisioned to be applied, um, in any quantity? Whether it's the new Lowery Street or Clinton or Governors or anything else like that? Can we make a standard to go along with the application? So we know what we're working towards and that these street supports the intensity of what is going on?
As far as the streets and the streetscaping, Jim can jump in here, I think that's done in engineering, that's not a planning issue, so I'm not sure if that's something that we would be able to have a say-so in.
It's absolutely something we'll look into with long-range staff, engineering and traffic engineering to make sure everybody understands, is on the same page, all the issues that they might or might not have with that redesign.
I, I have a question, Ashley, is there anything in, um, say, say there's a, a new parcel on, um, Holmes Avenue that's needs, that's going to get redeveloped? Is there anything that requires the develop, developer to rezone their property to this zoning district?
Um, no, it's just an option if someone, if they are eligible to rezone, of course, we have to turn down a lot of people that think they can rezone their single-family home to commercial or whatever. It's basically just an option, um, similar to the form-based code, um, proposed ordinance that was introduced several months ago. It's not something that's required or the city is saying you must do this. Um, it is something that we would like to encourage within certain areas, but it's not a requirement, um, particularly if you're in a zoning district that you can already accommodate for these uses. Do you really have a need?
Yeah, obviously this is going to, you have a, a lot of individual parcels along all of these streets that we're talking about and, um, it, it seems you would want to strongly encourage somebody to, because you have, you have a piece of property that's adopted this, this rezoned, another piece of property that has, but there's a property in the middle that's, doesn't want to rezone and so their guidelines are, you know, that, they don't accom, they don't follow the same requirements that the adjacent properties do.
Right, and in some cases, um, particularly one we had, I guess a year or so ago, um, there were several property owners that, the property was split zone, they wanted to go to a full commercial zone, um, with any rezoning, if we have issues similar, um, we do strongly encourage that all of the property owners get on one accord and we also have that in writing, that way no one can come back and say, well, the city forced me to do this or I? or I never agreed to this rezoning." But we've had pretty positive feedback, for the most part, on a lot of the criteria within it. So I wouldn't see why anyone would want to have a pushback, but I do understand what you're saying, especially in your light and heavy industry areas where you have no design, no anything. Why would I want to go to something more restrictive when I can just keep what I have and still get pretty much more bang for my buck?
So I would say that if the intent is to increase the design quality in these zones and make them look sort of homogeneous in terms of their development, however we can do it, or if we can do it, force somebody to do it.
And there have been city-imposed zonings in the past. But of course, we do have to have the property owners written consent, but that is an option as well, that the city can do a city-imposed zoning with the property owners' consent.
Just like if you renovate a certain amount of a building, you know, if you spend more than, say, 50% of the value of a building, you have to now bring it up to meet current codes.
Right.
It's kind of a similar thing, is what I'm suggesting.
But not if your neighbor, if your neighbor renovates or builds, builds fresh or renovates a building up to these codes. I mean, are you proposing that the city be able to go to the adjoining property owner and say, "Hey, you've got to bring your property up to..."
I'm suggesting that any, anybody that has a site that they're redeveloping, we're not trying to force anybody that's not going in with a new development to do anything.
Okay.
I just don't, the intent is to make these districts look homogeneous, continuous, have the same streetscape along the street. And we know they're not going to be developed all at the same time, but over a period of 10, 15 years, the idea is to get to, you know, a...
Right.
So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm not, I don't want any existing property owner that is sitting in his building happy to have to do anything.
I think it's an interesting question, though, because right now, if we have 75% of the people on a street want a sidewalk, it gets us in, even if those others want a...
I heard that, since we're sending it back.
That's right.
You cannot force a landowner to rezone his property and make him bring it up. I mean, it's just, I mean, that's, it's fundamentally against everything I believe in. So I understand what we're trying to do, but I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's where we're going on this. I just, I just wanted to clarify, you know, that that's not where we're going into forcing rezonings.
And simply as a point of clarification, in terms of what the city is authorized to do legislatively, we can rezone the property with or without a property owner's permission. It just can't be arbitrary, capricious. It depends on what you're conceptualizing this particular zone to be. PUDs, because of the nature of a PUD, requires a unified control and an application process that the owner brings it in en masse. So there's, it's different. And, you know, I think that planning can clarify what they're envisioning or what you want to envision this particular type of zone as. You know, similar to a PUD where the people come in en masse with an application to rezone a particular area or any typical rezoning where we might rezone something C4 or C1 and it's larger than one particular property owner's ownership interest, so...
But do you have to, if the city wants to do that, don't you have to go through some sort of legal process?
Well, owners are notified and they have the opportunity to chime in on the nature of the...
Just a public hearing?
A public hearing, they're notified. But in a typical rezoning, it's a legislative act. So a rezoning, a zoning map change or a zoning text change may occur, and you don't necessarily have to go to the particular property owners for their permission in order to do that.
I just think there needs to be some way, if we're saying there's a certain intent with this ordinance for this classification, then there must be some way to get there. And right now, there's not that way to get there.
And, you know, it's, there are different planning tools and zoning tools that the planning staff is very familiar with, that may be able to accommodate everybody's input in an appropriate manner, given all of your comments and what they're trying to achieve. But I just wanted you to clarify that legally, it just depends on what type of rezoning you're looking at in terms of an application process where you get all of the owners to apply and to come under a type of joint unified control versus those that, you know, just as a typical rezoning sometimes where it's a large area that's rezoned and, you know, may include a lot of property owners. And they're notified, but, you know, whether they are required to agree may be one thing versus whether as a policy, we want them to agree.
Okay, do we, do we have any other specific discussion regarding the items in this proposed zoning change? Or do we want to, are we ready for a motion on it? If no one has any further things to discuss, I would entertain a motion.
I think I made a motion to approve and it was seconded. So I would, I would restate my motion to send back to planning staff for further review.
Second.
Second.
Okay, who seconded? Okay, you seconded, you accept his revision to the, okay. Okay, all in favor of the revised motion, wait a minute. Is there any discussion on the revised motion? All in favor of the revised motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Find my page here, okay. Okay, our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Jim, would you present this for us?
Yes, ma'am, we recommend the invocation of items one through three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And that's our last agenda item. Is there any further business to come before the planning commission? Not with standard adjourned.